Good evening, colleagues. Will everyone please take their seats? Do you do the pledge? Yeah, you... Ah, Tweak, you're closer. All right. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, led by Counselor Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, colleagues. We have, as you can see, a slightly larger audience than we do for our typical full city council meetings. I'd like to think, because everyone's really interested in our later debate about the city shield, but I expect that's not true. So we are going to proceed with first call this evening. We're going to go through our first call items. We're then going to take a quick recess, and I'm going to ask Counselor Lipoff as Chair, Counselor Albright, and Counselor Baker to escort the mayor and the lieutenant governor in, since we are honored to have lieutenant governor here with us this evening. The mayor will then give her... The lieutenant governor is going to make a few remarks. The mayor will give her State of the City address. We will then adjourn. We'll give everyone a couple minutes to exit the room. We'll go back to second call. Right now, we have two items on second call. One is a very quick one, just assigning a committee of the whole meeting. The other is potentially more substantive. Our colleagues, of course, we are being both audiotaped and videotaped this evening. This is a regular meeting of the city council. We're going to start with first call. We're going to go to Chair Kelly for the land use committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The land use committee report starts on page 22 of the city council reports docket. Our committee met on January 28th. At that time, we approved two Class II auto dealer licenses, number 11-25 for New England Motor Mart and number 2-25 for Roberts Towing. Both were approved 8 to 0. We also approved docket item number 362-24, which was a request to allow four single-family attached dwellings to reduce the side setback and to allow a driveway within 10 feet of the side lot line and parking within 20 feet of a boundary line at 51 Oak Ave. That was approved 7 to 0. Number 68-24 was also approved, request to amend special permit number 40-97 Perrins 2 to allow a freestanding sign at 269-287 Grove Street. It was approved. Oh, sorry, that was... First, they... That was approved, a withdrawal without prejudice 8 0. Then we approved number 4-25, a resubmission of the same issue for a sign at that address at 269-287 Grove Street. That was approved 7 1. And our final item was number 5-25, a request to alter and extend a non-conforming two-family dwelling use at 273-275 Webster Street, approved 7 0. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Kelly. I do note that we have four counselors online this evening. Counselors Gentile, Danberg, Downs, Mickley... Oh, Downs is here. Forgive me. She's also online as well. I can only... I go in two places at once. And Counselor Wright is also online. So four folks online this evening. Everybody else is in the chamber. Next, we have the zoning and planning committee, Chair Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met, but all our items are held.
Thank you. Programs and Services Committee, Counselor Crinsman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everyone who did come tonight to hear the Programs and Services Committee report. Appreciate you all turning out. Programs and Services Committee met on January 22nd. Item 447-24, the appointment of Sam Figler to the licensing board was approved by a vote of 7 to 0. Second item was held. And the final item, item 6-25, the appointment of Claire Wadlington to the Newton Community Education Commission, was approved by a vote of 8 to 0. With that, I would move the report.
Thank you, Chair Crinsman. Chair Grossman for Public Safety and Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page 26. The first item, 123-24, requesting a regular discussion with the police department, was held 6 to 0. And then 325, providing the annual report of the work of Traffic Council for 2024, was voted no action necessary, 6 to 0. With that, I move the report.
Thank you, Chair Grossman. Chair Albright for the Public Facilities Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report is on page 27. First item is counselors Down, Grossman, Lipoff, Bixby, Mickley, Laredo, Labavitz, Malachi, Kelly, Albright, Lucas, Crinsman, Greenberg, Wright, Getz, and Danberg, requesting a discussion with the Director of Planning, Commissioner of DPW, or their designees for what metrics will be used for the pilot to provide an opportunity for counselor input. This was the Washington Street pilot. This item was voted no action necessary with a vote of 7 to 0, but it will be replaced by a new item. Matter of fact, it has been replaced already by a new item on behalf of the Public Facilities Committee to request updates on the Washington Street pilot. And then there were two items held. The last item is, Her Honor the Mayor requesting authorization to enter into negotiations for the potential lease on city properties for purposes of third-party construction, ownership, and operation of onsite renewable solar energy generation from which the city will purchase electric output and/or net metric credits. This was approved 7 to 0. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Chair Albright. Next, I have Chair Gentile for the Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to start by asking for a suspension of the rules in order to report out three items that we took up earlier this evening for which there is no written report.
All in favor of suspension of the rules, please say aye. Aye, oppose, the ayes have it. Go ahead, please, Chair Gentile.
First item is 9-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting authorization to transfer and expend the sum of $393,900 from current year wage reserve to fund three different contracts. This item, at the request of the mayor's office, was amended to add an additional $100,000 in order to fund an agreement that had been reached with city nurses. So that motion passed 7 to 0. And then the amended amount, which is $493,900, was approved by a vote of 7 to 0. The second item is 8-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting authorization to enter into negotiations for the potential lease on city properties for purposes of third-party construction, ownership, and operation of onsite renewable solar energy generation. This item was approved 7 to 0. And the last item was 10-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting authorization to accept and expend the sum of $25,600 from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for technology updates in the Emergency Operations Center. That item was also approved by a vote of 7 to 0. And with that, I would move the report.
Thank you, Chair Gentile. Finally, Chair Danberg for the Real Property Reuse Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no report.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our reports on first call. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Albright.
Aye.
Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Bixby.
Aye.
Counselor Block.
Aye.
Counselor Danberg.
Aye.
Counselor Downs.
Aye.
Counselor Farrell.
Aye.
Counselor Gentile.
Aye.
Counselor Getz.
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey.
Aye.
Counselor Kalis.
Aye.
Counselor Kelly.
Aye.
Counselor Crinsman.
Aye.
Counselor Leary.
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff.
Aye.
Counselor Labavitz.
Aye.
Counselor Lucas.
Aye.
Counselor Malachi.
Aye.
Counselor Mickley.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
President Laredo.
Aye.
Motion carries 24 to 0.
All right. I'm going to ask now Counselor Lipoff, Counselor Albright, Counselor Baker, led by Counselor Lipoff, to get the lieutenant governor, the mayor, and three of our state representatives, Representative Vitolo from Brookline, Representative Schwartz, and Sangeolo for Newton. Yep, thank you. And of course, Counselor Lucas was kind enough to remind me that we should invite the school committee inside the rail. Do I have approval to do so? Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, school committee members, Prender and Levy, please come on in. Thank you. We have two of our top school committee members, though. Let's leave it at that. Small but mighty group. We do have one other school committee member who's going to join us as well. Come on in, please. Good evening. If I was funny, or I might tell jokes at this point in time, but I think that's a particularly bad idea for me. And I don't want to let Counselor Crinsman get on a roll here either. I thought he was... I thought he was fine, Counselor Lucas, but we can do the ratings afterwards. How's that? We're not going to take a roll call on whether you were funny or not, Counselor Crinsman.
Mr. President, colleagues and invited dignitaries, I'd first like to welcome the Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll for honoring us with her presence tonight. It's my great honor to welcome you all to the annual State of the City address. This event serves as a moment for reflection on where we've been, recognition of where we stand, and inspiration for where we are headed as a community. Tonight, we have the privilege of hearing from a leader who has been at the forefront of our city's progress, our mayor. Through her vision, dedication, and leadership, she has worked tirelessly to strengthen our community, address challenges, and create opportunities for all residents. Without further ado, please join me in welcoming our mayor, the Honorable Ruth Ann Fuller.
So colleagues, assembled guests, it's my great pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, who's going to say a few words for this evening.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much, Council President Laredo, for the warm introduction and for the opportunity to be with all of you this evening. As a former mayor, I just feel it's such an honor to be here. The State of the City is an important recognition of the work that communities do to make the lives of citizens and business owners and students better. And it's a privilege to be able to be a part of it this evening, in particular because we know it's Mayor Fuller's last day to the... This last day of the city. And she and I have been longtime colleagues as mayors, but also partners in this new role as lieutenant governor. I think it's a little bittersweet when it's your last one, but it's also a chance to hold up and think about all the work that you've done. And I'm excited for what's ahead. And I really do want to thank the mayor for not just holding the title of mayor, but actually doing the work. And it's a hard job. It is not easy. All of you know that. If you're involved in local government, if you love where you live, there's no greater way to influence your community than serving as mayor. That does not mean it's easy, and that does not mean that the decisions you make are always popular. But I do believe that serving in this role, in addition to serving as the head of the MMA, Ruth Ann's also been a member of the Local Government Advisory Commission, the group that I meet with on a monthly basis. She's continued to give back in ways outside of Newton to help ensure that their representation for cities and towns was capably recognized by the work that happens here. I'm also so pleased to be here with Rep. Sangelo, Rep. Schwartz, Rep. Vitolo. We are a partnership in Massachusetts. The work that we're able to do in our administration is thanks to the continued good fortune of working with people in the legislature who care as well. And I just want to say to the counselors who are here, I'm sure there are people who serve on boards and commissions. I had a chance to meet some of the department heads, how grateful I am for the work you do every day. You know, as a mayor for 17 years in Salem, prior to that, I had the good fortune to work in a number of communities at the level of ensuring that what happens every day where the rubber hits the road is thought of and worked on and tackled. And it's also a thankless job. The folks who are in this room care about the community they live in, are willing to give back every single day. And both the governor and I have such gratitude to be able to work with partners who care about what's happening in a meaningful way. And I say that with the lens of local government being the branch of government that most of us rely on the most in our daily lives, if you think about it, who's educating your children, who are keeping your neighborhood safe, who are investing in infrastructure, whether it's a favorite memory you have of a park or a street corner, or the place that's driving that economic vitality in the community where you live, that's delivered locally. Those are the services that all of you help provide and confer, make sure are funded, running down the hard challenges, whether it's a tough zoning vote, or how we're going to wrestle with a budget issue when there's not limited or unlimited resources. So we really feel great gratitude for being in our roles as lieutenant governor, as governor, and are really trying to drive an administration forward in a way that uplifts and empowers what's happening at the local level. We want to make it easier for you and for your department heads, for folks who are serving in boards and commissions, to do the important work of creating a high quality of life here in the city of Newton. That's why we're trying to make really historic investments, whether that's in the traditional funding like Chapter 70 or Chapter 90, making major increases there, or in newer programs. How do we think about future-proofing our infrastructure? How can we provide tools at the local level through the Municipal Empowerment Act? These are the things that drive some of the work we're doing at the State House, because we know that we can have the best policies. And we are fortunate to be in a role to shape policies and shift resources. But the housing gets built here, students get educated here, we drive a workforce on the ground in communities, whether it's a downtown or an office complex. So what you do in this chamber really matters. And I'm thrilled to be able to be here with all of you in support of that work as we move forward. And I'll close with this, because I really came here to hear from Mayor Fuller and expressing the good work she's doing and the work that we hope to do going forward. Is in 2026, we're going to be celebrating the 250th anniversary of America's independence, Declaration of Independence. It's called the semi-quintcentennial. Kind of rolls right off the tongue, doesn't it? No, it doesn't. But it is a major milestone. And as you know, this revolutionary spirit that helped create this country started right here in Massachusetts. We were the troublemakers through the tea in the harbor. We're the place where people really risked life and limb to think about self-governance, to think about a better way of delivering on the promise of freedom or democratic freedom, where people would have a say in what happens in their community. And I think about that today, nearly 250 years later. All of you sit in seats, not unlike the people who sparked that revolution. They were ordinary people. They were farmers and merchants and laborers. They had no playbook, but they thought about something better than having a monarch from very far away drive their decision-making. And they thought about ways that they could invest in themselves to build this democratic future. So we're going to have a big celebration in 2026 to recognize the role that we played. Philadelphia and Virginia are working hard to tell us that democracy was invented there. We're not going to let that happen. We remind them that John Adams had a little bit something to do with creating the Declaration of Independence. I like to say it was just papered over in Philadelphia. All the real work got done here. But I say that to you because the foundation of the work that you do started there with people thinking, we might be better if we bring people together and learn how to self-govern. And it wasn't easy then, and it certainly isn't easy now, but it does pave the way for a brighter future. And as we're celebrating those 250 years, we're also thinking about, what's our gift to the next generation? What's the next 250 years look like? What is it going to mean to graduate from high school 250 years from now, or live in this community? And we know the investments that we make today, they do serve multiple generations. So I come here with gratitude for the role that I have, but also a great deal of gratitude for the roles that you have, stepping up, playing a leadership role in your community, trying to drive a better future for the generations to come. I'll be sitting in your seats, sitting in my seat, looking to have a Commonwealth that continues to be a place that sparks revolutions. So thanks for being here, and good luck in 2025.
Lieutenant Governor, thank you for those kind words, and thank you for honoring us for being here tonight. To our state representatives, both Sangeolo and Schwartz, and from right next door in Brookline, State Representative Vitolo, President Laredo, Vice President Kalis, President Emeritus Baker, city counselors, school committee members, city staff, the superintendent of the Newton Public Schools, Dr. Anna Nolan, with Chief McMains in front of her, and Chief Gentile by her to her right, many other Newtonians. And a special shout out to a surprise visitor. My husband Joe is there in the front row, who I didn't know was coming. Joe. I'll take a little personal liberty and say, if there's anybody in this world who has made it possible for me to do this work, it's Joe. So I'm very grateful to you, and I love you dearly. 2,590. That's the number of days since I first took the oath of office as mayor of the city of Newton. And as I stand before you tonight on the occasion of my eighth and, yes, final State of the City address, I can say confidently that the State of the City remains strong. And yes, I am filled with that same sense of gratitude, responsibility, and motivation that I had on day one. We are strong financially. Moody's just a few weeks ago again gave us their highest credit rating, a triple A. We have attracted, retained, and nurtured strong and talented teams, beginning with the capable and caring Amalia Timbers, Hattie Kerwin Derrick, and Sam Nyman. Where are you guys? Give a wave. Come on. And emanating throughout City Hall, Police Headquarters, fire stations, our DPW yards, and our parks, recreation, and culture outposts, the Newton Free Library, the Ed Center, and our 22 schools, which are powered by staff dedicated to serving our residents and students. Our teams work hard to deliver exceptional city services and provide a high-quality education to all our students. We have strong and vigorous democratic institutions in our city council and school committee. Both are venues where the myriad views of our residents get ear... residents get aired, debated, and resolved. We have a strong and large core of volunteers who step forward to serve on boards, commissions, and PTOs. We have strong, robust engagement in our neighborhoods and villages, our business and nonprofit communities. Thank you, Greg Reedman, for being here. And from our many groups focusing on the issues of our times, whether education, civil and human rights, climate, energy, arts, culture and community, housing, transportation, interfaith dialogue, justice, civility, and more. We are making strong, durable investments across the city. We have obligated all our American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding by the 2024 deadline. So each dollar is being put to work. We expanded the children's room at the Newton Free Library, improved ventilation technology curriculum, and athletic fields in the Newton Public Schools, paved neighborhood roads, updated outdoor recreation infrastructure, and assisted our small businesses, nonprofits, and residents disproportionately hurt by COVID-19. Jonathan Yeo, our COO, has been our ARPA leader. Well done, Jonathan. Thank you. We act on our strong, deep commitment to people who are disabled, are LGBTQ+, and those who are marginalized, stigmatized, or financially insecure, in need of a roof over their head and food on their table. And I want to give a shout out to the meaningful efforts of the Center Street Newton and Arabic Baptist Church Food Pantries. And together, all of us have accomplished so many of the aspirational goals I set out for us in my inaugural speech on January 1st, 2018. I can't decide, by the way, if that was a nanosecond ago or eons ago. I think it's a little bit of both. Rebuilding schools with new additions complete at Oak Hill and ready to go at Horace Mann, the construction of three new elementary schools unfolding as we speak, Lincoln Elliott Countryside and Franklin, and the creation of our first dedicated facility for our preschoolers, with our littlest ones already in the building. I want to shine a light on the great work over so many years on school buildings by Josh Morse, our Public Buildings Commissioner, or Just Wait, and his team, and also Emily Prender, school committee and school building member extraordinary, extraordinary to the two of them. Opening the Cooper Center for Active Living this fall, Newton's first-ever building designed specifically to be all-age friendly with a focus on older adults, which I think all of you must know, that's our fastest-growing demographic group here in Newton. Reinvesting in our streets and sidewalks with 125 roads repaved in the last two years alone, give a shout out to Shawna Sullivan and Bernie McDonald. Updating our zoning for housing near public transit by allowing more and varied housing, Newton will welcome young adults who want to move home, but not into their parents' basements, older residents who want to downsize, and people with modest incomes who are priced out of Newton. All this while simultaneously strengthening the vitality of our villages. The thanks go to those of you in the seats in the curves here. It's the city council who accomplished that. Thank you, city councilors. Building an ecosystem that supports affordable housing. These efforts include creating our first-ever Affordable Housing Trust, which, by the way, the early proponent for that was none other than Amy Sangiolo. Thank you, Amy. So our first-ever Affordable Housing Trust, which paid dividends just a few weeks ago with the approval of funding for 112 units of affordable housing on North Street. Reconstruction of the West Newton Armory for Affordable Family Housing begins this spring. We are also joining with the state, thank you, LG, and an amazing nonprofit, Family Aid, to open a family shelter with excellent wraparound services for mothers and children. We are working with trusted partners, including the Newton Housing Authority and Two Life Communities, to expand affordable senior housing. We are adding affordable and more attainable housing with updated inclusionary and accessory dwelling ordinances. Thank you again, city councilors. And thanks also goes to Barney Heath, our director and Newton's planning staff, for your enormous help on all of this. To Barney and his team. Getting the commitment to rebuilding the Newtonville commuter rail station by engaging with state leaders and the MBTA. Kudos go to the governor, the lieutenant governor, and MBTA General Manager Aang for their leadership, and to former State Representative Kay Khan and Congressman Jake Auchenclos for their persistence. Good job. Making sustainability our touchstone and renewable energy the order of the day. Newton is leading on sustainability, thanks to great leadership from Anne Burwick and Bill Ferguson, and a bevy of knowledgeable residents. With their leadership, we have led Massachusetts with Newton Power Choice, solar panels, electric vehicles, and Energy Coach, electrification, Burdo, and more, all guided not just by our first-ever Climate Action Plan, but with version 2.0 underway. Preserving Webster Woods for future generations. Bravo, Councilor Baker, Chief Environmental Planner Jennifer Steele, Beth Wilkinson, Wida Young, and so many others. Nice job. Keeping the community prepared for fires, floods, extreme heat, snow, and ice, with, I guess, not hats off, but rather a helmet off, to Greg Gentile, who is double-helmeted as our Fire Chief and Emergency Operations Director. Thanks, Chief. Supporting our police and Chief McMains, so they continue to have the resources and training to keep our community safe. And we are, thanks to your leadership, Chief. Providing quality city services, in part by overhauling our 3-1-1 system and enabling online permitting for the first time in city history. Helping our community members be as healthy as possible, even during a worldwide pandemic, by providing up-to-date scientifically-based information and compassionate access to human and mental health resources. Investing in our future with $630 million of capital projects completed or underway during my time as mayor, while staying fiscally responsible and balancing the immediate needs of our residents with our significant long-term unfunded responsibilities to our retirees. And we are doing so despite being buffeted by the financial fallout of the pandemic and inflation. Great work, CFO Maureen Lemieux. Providing a mayor's update filled with, yep, nerdy, comprehensive, and yes, sometimes fun, information to 38,000-plus unique contacts, and making it useful so we actually average a 70% open rate. I tip my proverbial hat to Owen Ishkanian, our Director of Community Communications. Asking for ideas, holding frequent office hours, listening intently, resisting divisiveness, and acting respectfully, all while trying my best to model the golden rule. I would like to thank Kim Driscoll for serving as a role model in this regard, both as mayor of Salem and now as lieutenant governor. She leads, gets stuff done, and tackles thorny issues with wisdom and grace. Thank you, LG. I am proud to lead a city where we live our strong values of respect and inclusion, diversity and acceptance, compassion, and equity. All year long, we come together to celebrate, to support, and to learn from each other. At Lunar New Year and Diwali, with the rabbi lighting a menorah on the Newton Center green, and Santa ushering in Christmas at Coletti Magni Park, on Veterans Day and the Fourth of July, on Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day at Ramadan Iftar, and the Saint Mary of Carmen Festa in the lake. And that's just a sampling. So yes, the state of our city remains strong. And yes, we will need this strength in the days ahead. We have much work to do. Some of this work is clear and straightforward. Support our youngsters in our public schools. Pave more roads while making Newton safer for walking and biking. Encourage more diversity in housing. Refresh more playgrounds and open another splash pad. Thank you, Nicole Banks. Plant more trees. Increase and improve athletic fields. Again, a shout out to Nicole Banks and her team. Expand community policing. Raise the curtain on more performing arts at our first community auditorium at the new Lincoln Elliott. Paula Gannon, God bless you. Invest more in flood mitigation. Provide more access to social services. Some of the work ahead is more challenging. That work involves trying to build consensus, moving forward by embracing change, and prioritizing between competing goals. Here are just a few of the challenges that we together have to work through. Over at the former Walker Center next to the Williams Elementary School in Aubreydale, we have competing goals for the site: affordable housing, historic preservation, recreation, and school needs. To improve the Village Center in Newton Highlands, we need to balance the needs of businesses and neighbors, parking and driver, pedestrian, bicyclist safety. In addition, we simply do not have enough dollars for the infrastructure investments, while also doing something that I know the neighborhood would love: undergrounding the overhead wires. In the heart of Newton Center, where we have a large parking lot, we want to support our businesses and have the right mix of convenient parking and great gathering space. Our two largest development projects, perhaps ever, Northland and Riverside, both may be coming back again for approvals. Northland definitely is. They're coming back this week. Understandably, we want it all for these projects, and yet, the sum total of our asks may end up not being fully feasible or achievable. At the Newton Public Schools, we face at least two dilemmas, but I'll mention two of them. We want to keep all our aging neighborhood elementary schools, and we want to rebuild eight of them soon. With declining enrollment and the requirement for a balanced budget, we need to make choices on the how, the what, the where, and the when. Simultaneously, we see firsthand the increasing complexity of student needs, persistently rising costs growing faster than city revenues, potential threats to federal funding, and likely constrained state funding. This is creating tension between our profound commitment to our children's education and the financial realities of our taxpayers and our city. The context in which we must do this work and make these decisions is always challenging, but perhaps even more so today. One reason is familiar. While our city finances are strong, our revenues are growing modestly. That means we must continue to live within our means, and so our investments, which include programs, services, initiatives, contracted work, and personnel, both the number of employees and our compensation packages, must also grow modestly. A second reason is the reality that a lot is changing quickly in Washington, DC, impacting people across our country and right here in Newton. The values we hold dear in Massachusetts and in Newton may not be shared by those in charge in our capital. Senator Markey called me this afternoon, and while he, Senator Warren, and Congressman Auchenclos will continue to stand up for us, we may not have access to the same amount of federal funding for housing, education, transportation, climate resiliency, or human services in the days, weeks, months, or years ahead. Our investments may be forced to change. Our ability to advance our goals for our planet and our people may not move forward as quickly as we planned, nor on the scale we would like. Regardless, our values will endure. We will care for each other. Our commitment to making residents, workers, and visitors welcome, safe, and secure in Newton, regardless of where they were born, will remain. Our respect for people who live and work here, regardless of how or whether they choose to pray, their ancestry or country of origin, the color of their skin, the language they speak, who they love, and how they identify, is unshakable. Let me close tonight by sharing reflections from the outgoing Surgeon General of the United States, Dr. Vivek Murthy. I was recently in the audience when Dr. Murthy- I was recently in the audience when Dr. Murthy spoke movingly in his final public speech. He focused on the central question he had been grappling with during his two terms as Surgeon General. What is the deeper root cause of the unhappiness he encountered so often across the United States? After years of study, conversations, and reflection with input from experts across disciplines and analysis of data, he narrowed his answer down to three essential elements that fuel well-being: relationships, service, and purpose. For too many, these three elements are in too short supply. Surgeon General Dr. Murthy said that the first, relationships, are a powerful source of joy, support, and resilience. The second, service, from formal volunteering to informal, small, quick acts of kindness, foster connections and bind us to each other. The third, purpose, gives our lives direction and meaning. As a doctor, this triad of relationships, purpose, and service is his prescription for the country for reducing the risk of a wide range of illnesses from heart disease and hypertension to anxiety and depression, as well as cognitive decline and early death. The Surgeon General shared data documenting how all three elements have diminished in the lives of Americans. Approximately 33% of adults and 50% of young people are struggling with loneliness today. A majority of people in our country are not engaged in either formal or informal service to each other. Likewise, a majority of young adults say that they have little or no sense of purpose or meaning in life. Dr. Murthy closed by saying that relationships, service, and purpose not only underpin personal fulfillment, but also serve as the core pillars of community. My observations while serving as a city councillor for eight years and now as mayor for seven confirm Dr. Murthy's diagnosis. Relationships, service, and purpose are critical contributors to a healthy community. I do not know for certain what lies ahead on the national stage. I am quite certain, though, that for all of us here in Newton, that for the state of the city of Newton to remain strong, we must double down on relationships that sustain us, on service that connects us, and on purpose that guides us. Thank you and good night.
If the escort committee could escort the mayor, lieutenant governor, or our guests out of the chamber, we'll take a two-minute break. We'll let the school committee go home. I know you want to stay for the next scintillating discussion. We'll spare you, and then we have two items on second call. My colleagues, if you could take your seats, please. I suspect we will now be the only ones in the chamber, although maybe we'll have a loyal listening audience at home. It'll be fine. All right, so colleagues, maybe Counselor Kales is going to take the door for us. That's what the good vice presidents handle these things. Thank you Counselor Kales. I think you're right, Counselor Lucas. Vice presidents are supposed to take care of the doors, the windows, all the other things we need. Pardon? It's like the newest justices in the Supreme Court. Thank you Counselor Crinsman. All right. So folks, we have two items. The first is going to be very quick. It's simply going to be that we are on second call, need to assign a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday night so we can meet with the school committee and the mayor to discuss the budget. I need a roll, I need a roll call. I think we can do this on a voice vote. All in favor of holding the meeting on Thursday night, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. I hope to see everyone at 6:15 on Thursday evening at the Allen House for dinner, followed up by our meeting at seven. This is similar to what we did last year, which I think, I would hope most or all of us would have agreed was actually a very successful meeting. So I hope we replicate that this year. The second item is from Programs and Services. I'm going to recognize the chair, Chair Crinsman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is item 55-24, requesting an update regarding city seal redesign. So as I think folks know, over a year ago, the issue of our city seal was raised in a desire by many to redo the city seal because of some of the symbolism included within that seal, and what many felt was inappropriate symbolism in that city seal. And so the way this process unfolded, the mayor asked for a working group to create and came to the Programs and Services Committee. Programs and Services, through a series of sort of straw votes, acknowledged, and then I think the full city council said, okay, we want to form a working group. At one point, we actually asked that city councillors be included on the working group. After that, city councillors were included on the working group, and a few different times over the past year, the working group has come before the Programs and Services Committee to both check in on the work that they were doing and sort of get a, you know, sort of a straw, are we headed in the right direction? Are we doing the work you want us to do? Approval from the city council to continue that work, all with the understanding that the potential redesigned city seal would then come back to the city council. And so tonight, what we have before us is essentially the opportunity to approve the item. Now, what approving the item would do would be giving a nod, giving approval to the redesigned city seal. As folks may know, the city seal is included within the ordinances and is under the control of the city council, and that's the main reason why it's coming to us. What the ordinance does is actually details in writing what that city count, what that city seal is to look like. So tonight, what we would do, if we choose to approve this item, is essentially give a nod to the depicted city seal that has been before the committee, and then the understanding is that the mayor would dock it a new item that actually makes the ordinance change, restructures the wording of the ordinance to correlate to that new approved city seal. So the vote of the committee was six to zero to two, and what I'd like to do, Mr. President, or through you, is turn it over to the vice chair of the committee, who was on the working group and can detail further the workings of that group.
That sounds good, Chair Crinsman. Vice Chair Humphrey, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So since this is, if you want to put it up on the screen, this is, for some of you, you've seen it for a while and followed the work. Some of you, this might be your, you know, first or almost first opportunity looking at what we've done. So I wanted to give a little bit of background on the process, the results, et cetera. And then I have gotten enough feedback at this point from colleagues, and this had come up as a possibility at the Programs and Services meeting, that it seems best that we not actually debate and vote this tonight, but I did want to give a presentation so that you have an opportunity to digest that information and think about it, ask any further questions here from the public before our next meeting. So just to preview where I'm going with this. But let's talk a little bit about the process. So there's been, you know, more than five years now of discussion and community input at this point. This is something that we started working on as a community in August of 2020. The initial working group was mostly a research phase, including our Director of Historic Newton, asking to make recommendations about, you know, whether we keep the existing seal, go for an all-new seal, try to update and tweak the one we have. Is this an image that is still relevant and meaningful 155 years after its creation? Are the words around it, the ones that we want, you know, the overall iconography and so forth? In November of 2021, so more than a year later, the initial Phase One working group submitted its final report with recommendations on essentially changing the seal. And the core focus here, among some smaller details, was that central scene that you see on the left there of Pastor John Elliott proselytizing to Indigenous people who, as you can see, are largely depicted as faceless, and that this should be replaced with a more suitable, inclusive, modern image representing the institution of the city of Newton and representing the community. And it also is important, this, there's a lot of versions that exist of the one on the left, and it's a very complicated seal. Now, we're not obviously designing a branding logo or anything like that, but we do need the seal to be something that's easily replicable, can be done in multiple formats, can be done in both black and white and color. So as Counselor Crinsman said, the city council previously had said, okay, green light to the working group, let's get some city councillors involved in that process as well. That was me, and then subsequently Counselor Malachi. We went through a competitive bid process to find a graphic designer. We found an incredibly talented and qualified graphic designer, Sebastian Ellington Ebarb. He had previously worked on updating and digitizing the historic city of Boston seal. He also oversaw the work of the town of Natick, which has almost the exact seal that we had previously. They needed a new seal as well. He oversaw that process. He also has experience facilitating community discussions and was able to help lead with that. And he also happens to be Indigenous, so that was a plus, but he was far and away the most qualified of the three submissions that we got, and it was a very easy decision. So we went through that earlier process. We went through a community listening session process. To be fair, you know, people were more interested in filling out forms than necessarily showing up in person. There wasn't huge turnout for some of those, but that's okay. We had the working group that besides me and eventually Counselor Malachi, included, as I said, Lisa Dady from Historic Newton, a number of Newton residents, including someone who is also a graphic designer, a representative from one of the city departments on behalf of all the departments that are going to need to display these logos everywhere. As you know, this, if approved, would be a gradual rollout process. It would not be an overnight change. Obviously, things that are weekly documents, that changes right away, but anything that is more permanent, you know, uniforms, truck logos, things like that, that would be changed over time as we're replacing those things anyway. The seal, the historic seal on the floor of City Hall in the rotunda would remain. There would be a historic plaque contextualizing it and so forth. But we went through a very extensive process, put to the public three possibilities. We went through a very lengthy discussion phase. You know, what do we want depicted on the seal? What would represent the city? Many folks wanted natural elements. So as you can see, we have the tree and the pond in front of City Hall. City Hall was ultimately selected as something that was a location-neutral symbol of the city, that it represents the institution of the city of Newton, but it's not representing a specific neighborhood and so forth. We also worked extensively with our council president emeritus, Lyle Baker, to, you know, he's an elder statesman of our community, and we wanted to make sure that we got his input on how to make this transition that is respectful of our historic traditions, while also updating to something that we feel comfortable with here. We ended up, as you can see, changing some of the text. We went with 1688, a single date, because one of the dates was not historically grounded. One of the dates was about city incorporation, and we selected the date of town incorporation. We spelled out, city of Newton, Massachusetts. We drew on the typography of, you know, earlier versions of the city seal that were first produced in the 19th century. We kept liberty and union. That's a mid-19th century, pre-Civil War phrase that was very important in Massachusetts political culture and was, I think, deliberately retained when they were designing the seal shortly after the American Civil War. We decided to talk about 13 villages, explicitly spell that out, because we feel that that's an important part of the identity of the city of Newton. Obviously, there was a lot of questions in the public about removing the word non-nantum. In this case, non-nantum does not refer to the village. That village was actually named subsequently to the creation of this seal. It refers to, again, this scene with Pastor Elliott, and is sort of a synthetic or synthesized word in, you know, kind of a native word, but not really original to their culture that refers to these praying towns, so-called, which subsequently moved to Natick, which is why their seal is very similar. We had various versions that were quite complicated, but the understanding was always that we were going to come up with a more simplified version, because again, you need to be able to photocopy it easily in small formats. You need to be able to put it on patches on the police and fire uniforms, things like that. And so this is what we ultimately came up with, and the colors reflect the colors of the building, the scene you can actually see in the spring and summer out front, and then we have an orange sort of sunrise motif, because both of our high schools, North and South, use orange as a color. So this is essentially what is before us at this point. We have, you know, as you know, not everyone's going to be happy with every single element of these things. It is very difficult to, you know, come up with something that everyone is reasonably happy with in a process like this. We had to do it through the working group because of the way that open meeting law works, and it's obviously not. We weren't going to have 24 of us weighing in with our graphic designer on every little change. graphic designer on every little change. So I hope that you'll have an appreciation for the process that we went through. At this point, just to conclude that process explanation, the working group work has concluded. So that is done. The administration's perspective is that this work is done. You now have a choice, again, we'll delay this for tonight, but you will have a choice between either keeping the existing city seal or recommending this change. The budget has been expended on the design work. Our designer was incredibly patient with us at every step of the way on making lots of little changes and refinements, usually working very quickly to make sure that that was done as fast as possible so we could think about it quickly and get this done. He has made clear his work is done. He will be around to support us in the implementation of this, but he will not be making further changes to the proposal. He's been very clear on that. And that is, again, the administration's position is that this work has concluded. So you can choose whether you want to keep the existing seal or whether you want to go with the proposed new seal. So that is where we are at in the process. I certainly am an enthusiastic recommender of the new proposal. But at this time, I am going to charter this item so that we have another couple of weeks to think about this.
The item's chartered, that ends all further discussions. Counselor Lucas motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned at 8:52 PM. Thank you all. Have a good evening.